Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, hi. How is everybody doing?
Good.
It's been awhile. Um, thank you for your time. Um, and thank you for letting me present first so I can skedaddle on over to my daughter's music program tonight. I'm excited. I'm not trying to take too much of your time as I'm sometimes known to do. Um, because I know you have a busy agenda ahead of you. Um, tonight I am presenting on K-12 Social Studies Curriculum. This presentation represents several months of review and collaboration with our social studies teachers and educators to ensure that the ongoing resources um are developmentally appropriate, aligned to state standards, um, and are engaging for students. Um, as we moved through the curriculum review process, we were guided by several key principles. Uh, we focused on choosing resources that are again developmentally appropriate, aligned to those standards, and offer a clear and coherent scope and sequence. We prioritized differentiation to meet a range of student needs, looked for ease of use, manageable prep time, and then of course, content that is engaging and interactive for students. The Minnesota K-12 Social Studies Standards provided, yeah, provided the foundation for this review. Each grade has specific benchmarks. Every grade level has a detailed standard alignment spreadsheet that they use to identify what is currently successful and the areas of need in their current resources. Additionally, some of those resources are going on fifteen or more years old. Um, and so just are physically in poor shape as well. Um, they researched a variety of options, spent numerous hours collaborating together and with their teaching teams, and even attended various live demos and interactions um to ask questions directly to vendors. This process began way back at the beginning of the school year and has led us here this evening. Throughout this process, I myself worked closely with our district's finance director Renee to ensure that we evaluated all options and remained within the implementation budget provided by the district. I held numerous meetings with each vendor to comb through line by line with their agreements in order to negotiate options. Um, all, I guess, in order to support our teachers and students while also again remaining within those financial expectations. The contracts established include all student and teacher resources over an extended period of time. Our curriculum review cycle ranges anywhere from six to eight years. Therefore, I worked with Renee and each of those vendors to establish contracts to last the life of that review cycle. This led to some fun negotiations as well as extensive discounts over the life of some of these contracts. Um, and removed any obligation for frequent or ongoing purchases. The selected resources were also vetted through thoroughly through the District Curriculum Review Advisory Committee. Uh, this committee is comprised primarily of parents and community members with a wide range of backgrounds. Most previously or currently have children across all grade bands of our school district. The committee spent the majority of our April meeting um reviewing each of the selected resources. That included textbooks, teachers manuals, and workbooks. They were also provided with online access to many of the resources to continue to review in their own time. And then finally, in May, they were presented with a very detailed presentation of each resource. Um, they were also able to ask questions to our social studies teachers. And again, were provided the opportunity to review those physical items themselves. Throughout that process, all feedback and discussions remained positive, supportive, and in favor of these selected resources. The final step of this long process lies here with you this evening. For elementary grades, we selected, or excuse me, the selected resources include Let's Find Out for Kindergarten and TCI for grades one through five. These are the resources that are currently used in those grade levels already. Um, they are student-centered and built around interactive, hands-on lessons focused on actively engaging young learners, um, whether that's through movement, creating a map, project work, collaboration with peers, so on. Both programs emphasize strong literacy integration, um, supporting vocabulary development, informational text reading, and writing. Digital and print formats are available, including new consumable textbooks. These allow students to complete their readings and activities all in the same book. Um, that makes it much easier for annotation, turning in assignments following along in class, and for substitutes to participate as well. The consistency across grade levels also support teacher planning and students as they transition from year to year throughout elementary school. The digital access also enhances whole-class instruction by allowing teachers to project and interact on the smartboard with their interactive maps, graphs, and reading passages. In addition to these resources, social studies learning is extended through a variety of field trips, such as nature walks for some of our younger students as they learn about their local community of Fergus Falls, to a wide variety of trips such as the Yum-Cum Center and area state parks. Middle school resources were selected because they're designed to support a wide range of student needs while aligning closely to those Minnesota state standards. Differentiation is embedded throughout each program with supports for multiple reading levels, English learners, and flexible lesson formats. This is beneficial for supporting students' various reading levels as the same text can then be adjusted as necessary. Students engage with a variety of text types such as narratives, formal documents, maps, timelines, graphs, which all work to build conceptual understanding and content knowledge and reinforce those critical reading skills as well. Vocabulary development and writing are key components in each of these resources, and lessons include interactive activities to continue to enhance understanding. Finally, we have high school. Each course offering, whether it's a core class or an elective, includes built-in, again differentiated support um for varied learning levels, interests, instructional approaches. Uh, there's again a strong emphasis on literacy reinforcement as students continue to read and analyze more complex texts through again vocabulary study, text analysis, informational text features, as well as ample opportunities for research and writing. Print and digital formats allow flexibility for classroom instruction and student access. From kindergarten through high school, teachers can project again that text or information up on their smartboard to annotate, model, um, and engage with the content while their students are doing it on their physical resources in front of them. The final section here includes some college offerings available for students to take. These resources are primarily guided by the recommendation and expectations of the college themselves. This resource is well organized and also available online. The text supports college-level reading and vocabulary demands while providing numerous text analysis and writing components. I have very much appreciated the opportunity to be a part of this process. I continue to be impressed by the thoughtfulness and dedication of all of our teachers. Um, there are no immediate questions from the board. Um, I again thank you for your time, but you're always welcome to reach out. Are there any immediate questions today?
Am I invisible?
Yeah.
Are any of those textbooks or like for the senior higher or have you gravitated more towards just other types of?
They all have physical textbooks.
They all have physical textbooks? Okay.
Oh, you're not talking. That's okay. It's like, I don't know what to do about that.
That's not your responsibility.
Find some. Yes, they all have physical textbooks. Good question. Any other questions tonight?
I have one question, and Missy may also have the answer to this. But the reusable textbooks?
Yeah.
For the younger kids, was there like a significant change or like difference in cost of doing like a physical, like a reusable textbook as opposed to this one that would be, you know?
Uh, no, the price that we would pay for physical textbooks in addition to student workbooks, it's now all in one.
Okay.
Um, so one aside from feasibility and ease of use. It's actually cheaper because it requires less materials to print and create. Great question. Anything else? No? Thank you. Going twice. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Our next report will be from Ed Shea, our mechanical supervisor. Hello, Ed.
Hi. Time number two. Um, I'd like to report on three different things that we're doing in the district. Uh, Adams and McKinley have multi-stack units in with their geothermals. At Adams, we would have some glitches during the winter time where the system would lock into a mode and go gangbusters until I either shut it off or it tripped to safety. I would spend a lot of time over at Adams. I visited with Train, Jesse Rutgers from Train, and the multi-stack team, and they recommended a programming update because there was apparently a glitch in the program. We got the update in that system. We reloaded everything in, it got a new card, all that stuff. It's been running very well. Uh, no more glitches in the system. That apparently has taken care of that. Long as we updated the program and that at the Adams School, McKinley is very much the same, same unit just operates a little differently. We decided to update that one as well. Uh, while we were updating the program at McKinley, we noticed that the high-range, high-temperature of the unit was set at the maximum and the low-range was set at the minimum, making the unit go way fast, slow down, super hot, super cold, lots of cycles, lots of wear and tear in the unit. I've been here four years. In the last five years, we've changed street compressors at McKinley. And we believe that was part of why they were failing is they were being worked too hard. So we have adjusted those so it doesn't work as hard. The temperature on the high end has been dropped down, so it's not at the maximum anymore. And the temperature at the low end has been worked up a little bit so that it's not at the minimum. This is kind of being a test now this summer to see if we maintain the cooling during the school. The heat's been fine since we did it in the school. Uh, both of these together cost the school 4,472 bucks. I think it was money well spent. So between those two, we hope to get more life expectancy, longer lasting at McKinley. And then Adams, I just want to not have to live at that school during the winter anymore. The other thing I want to talk about is the Kennedy chillers. And I talked about that at our last, the last time I presented, that we were having them come on the 28th and 29th to go through this thing. We had one on low oil pressure. The units haven't been running the way they're supposed to. They came on that day and they basically, they added oil to chiller one that was low on oil. They installed some remote monitors on there so they can see this thing from St. Paul or wherever they're from. Uh, they noticed that the chillers started prematurely to the temperature being warm enough outside. Uh, at that time, they gave us a clean bill of health. They were all good. You're good to go. Yay. Four days later, low oil again. So after that, we had a great big pow-wow, um, had a team's meeting, had lots of big dogs on this meeting. And they were all saying, well, why are your chillers doing this? And I got with my communications guy, and we had worked through this already, me and climate control, Galen Rongrin from climate control. And it was basically, we tell the chillers what to do. It changes in the program for the chillers, and then it changes right back again. So we have no control of these chillers. So where, the chillers are running on their own in a little loop up there, keeping a little loop at a certain temperature with a lot of starts and stops. So we're going to have them here tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and we're going to go through this communication issue and try to put this to bed. On top of all of this stuff, we've had these chillers now for two years. We have not had a summer of good run, consistent run. We don't know how well this is working. So with Jeff's advice and help, I got with Lake Country Service Co-op. They reached out to the head muckety-muck from California, and we're looking at trying to get the warranty extended for another year. I'm not comfortable with these things without a year under our belt to prove that they're going to work. I've had to Band-Aid and change programming with their help to get it to run. Right now, ninety-five degrees in Kennedy is cool, but that's because we cheated. So tomorrow was going to be a good day. Um, I'm hoping everything gets put to bed and life is good, and then we just have to get the warranty. And the only other thing I got left is I have a gentleman retiring from my group. He's been with us for twenty-eight years, Dan Hanson, and he'll be on this meeting for later on. He will be missed. Uh, I am looking to hire again, but I'm going to bring, I want to bring someone in at a lower level and train them, bring them up. It might save us a little bit of money, but I think it's going to be a good deal for the group. Again, he'll be missed. His last day is the thirtieth. Uh, do you have any questions for me about the chillers and the multi-stack units? Yay, I survived another meeting.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Thanks for trying to challenge me all that.
Yes, it's, it's, it's quite a challenge.
Yeah.
I'm glad I got Jeff in my corner.
The children, that is so disappointing because it is so new and they're still not working.
It, it cools the school, but it's almost as if they don't want to stand behind what they're putting in. This should have been done immediately, and I have been another nice person sometimes to get people to listen to me, to get them up here. They just don't want to come service our units.
But for you, they're expensive.
Well, when the warranty is up, I probably will never use carrier again because the service has been not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll move on to more reports and start with the beginning.
Um, the Five Forty-four Foundation met on, uh, last week, Thursday, May eighth at noon. And some of the highlights there, total assets are right now, they have 2.3 million dollars. Some of the highlights of some of the events. The 2025 Senior Recognition Ceremony was held, and scholarships recipients were announced last week. Uh, the spring newsletter went out April twenty-first. Uh, also the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six classroom wish list. We have twenty-one staff requests in so far, and staff have until the end of the school year to get their requests in. There will be seven class reunions so far this summer. And last thing, staff reunion will be right in this room on Thursday of next week, May twenty-second, between ten and eleven-thirty. So that'd be the retired staff reunion. On the finance side, we did not, have not had a meeting recently. We are scheduled to meet this week, um, May fourteenth on Wednesday at eleven AM with, over in the administrative building. So I have, unless there's any questions.
None of my committees have met, so I have no reports.
Um, and my reports are next. Uh, Region One.
Meeting met, and we, our, our former director stepped back in and um brought to the board's attention some of the things that had been unattended after the other guy quit. And then we talked about our next hiring process and some internal adjustments just to um, uh, continue to empower some of the other staff who've shown good leadership. So that's the primary thing on Region One. Otherwise, the um, it's notable that many school districts are still um asking to be serviced by Region One because of the, the great customer outreach there. So, so all the programming things have gone on without a hitch, and that's fine, but we're revamping. And then Meet and Confer has not met, so that's all I have for my reports. Anybody have any questions? I'll move on to you, Kelly.
Okay. Um, the staff development committee met, and they just went over the staff development days again and then the breakout sessions um that we talked about last time. Um, and then they also talked about new committee members, one for the middle school, and they're still looking for a representative for Adams and McKinley. Um, the Ignite Learning Summit, um, they decided that maximum number of attendees, about fifteen people. Um, they did take out the stipend for it, uh, for some other trainings. Uh, they did put in there like a data float day consideration where they would find a sub at each elementary schools in the fall, winter, and spring to float from like each classroom. The interventionists and the principal would meet with the teachers to talk about interventions and what teachers are doing in the classrooms to meet the needs of our students and discuss students um to begin and exit intervention services, which is such a great thing. Um, and then the request for funds. And the wellness committee has happened.
Uh, any questions for Kelly?
Okay, um, policy committee has not met. I'm guessing that we'll be meeting soon, as soon as the legislature wraps up. And then, which we don't know when that will be. Um, the curriculum review committee met on April fourteenth, and you heard Amelia's report. That's, that was all the business that we did that night. And I would recommend that we do their request for here. Now, our report comes, can you give us that?
Okay, uh, Building and Grounds met. Um, like the day after the last time I gave this report, but so it's been awhile. Um, and we, we actually spent most of the meeting talking about the handbook, just kind of going through line by line, which we've already approved. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you to Renee and Derek and all those involved in putting that um, the, sorry, the facility use handbook, not handbook, handbook. Anyways, um, so there was a lot of work that went into that, and it was much needed. Um, we did spend a little bit of time talking about possible sites for a possible building. Um, but nothing firm yet other than if we're going to go out for a bond for another facility, it would have to, you know, be twenty-twenty-six or spring of twenty-seven um as our window of time to make it not such a sticker shock is closing. Um, but nothing firm on that. Uh, we did discuss some projects coming up with our, well, the ongoing mechanical systems. Uh, the pool began work in May twenty-twenty-six. Um, Cleveland has a bathroom refresh for students. This will start in June. Um, the staff bathroom that they were trying to find a spot for, this didn't work out um in the cafeteria kind of behind the serving station there. They needed that for other things. Um, I don't know the update on the, the Tremco warranties yet. Um, we discussed that. And then you guys know that there's going to be a big expense coming up with the stadium turf and track res servicing will be about 750,000. And that's kind of the gist. You were at the meeting too, if I'm missing anything, but I, that's pretty much the gist of the meeting. So that's all I have.
All right. And now we'll have our reports come on at some point in the next week.
Uh, good evening. First, some thank you is we've had a lot of celebrations in the last couple of weeks as we bring the year to a close. Uh, but I want to thank our principals for all the work they do. We had National School Principal Day here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we also had recently School Nurse Day, also School Lunch Superhero Day. And then, of course, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week with Teacher Appreciation Day was Tuesday, May sixth. So with appreciation to all those groups for all that they do to, in service to our students and community. Uh, it's a pleasure working and honor working with every one of them. Also want to say a thanks to our Otter Time students and some of the members of the Student Council for going around the campus and picking up some of the refuse that accumulates over the winter season uh to spruce up the outdoor area of our campus. So many thanks to the, uh, the students for that. Uh, hopefully, you had an opportunity to see the Spring Plague Clue at a Center for the Arts. Uh, kids did a fantastic job with that. Uh, we went Thursday night and appreciate all the work and time that went into that production. Some congratulatory notes, excuse me, Senior Recognition Night, really a wonderful night. Uh, thanks to Derek Abrahams and Amber Hovland for all the work they put into that program. Thanks to the Five Forty-four Education Foundation for the scholarships handed out. Uh, but really a nice celebratory evening, recognizing the accomplishments of, of the senior class, which are considerable. It's a lot of very, very bright young men and women in this class who have wonderful futures ahead of them. Uh, then, uh, so that was Monday night. Uh, on the following Tuesday morning, out at M State, Dollars for Scholars did their annual Scholarship Award Program. Uh, and so again, congratulations to our seniors. Uh, many, many thanks to the area, um, folks who donate so generously to Dollars for Scholars to keep these scholarships going and help our students pursue their future aspirations and dreams. And then I just want to recognize that the Philanthropy and Youth Program, PAYE, we are in our third year, and this has been a pretty remarkable program for our students. Um, not only do they develop some leadership skills in going out and researching various nonprofits, interviewing them about their mission statements and leadership models, uh, and then they end up awarding, um, funding to those nonprofits based on their criteria. Uh, that's, uh, the, the program receives funds to invest in nonprofits, and that's how the students learn and grow throughout that process. Uh, but as an added bonus, and it's not insignificant, um, we have now had five students over the course of three years receive $20,000 scholarships as part of this program. So, um, very, very generous foundation that funds all of this. And uh, thanks to Derek Abrahams, who got the program started in Fergus Falls, and Minnie Christensen, who led the program this year. Uh, we have another team that qualified for state. They took first place in the region. That's our Envirothon team. Uh, this is an annual tradition. Uh, so appreciate Mr. Pearson's work in advising this group of students, but really proud of them and their competition. I forgot to note where that is, but I think it's up along the North Shore, um, up past Two Harbors. And um, so it's a little bit unusual, but exciting to see a little different venue for the state competition. So certainly wish them the best of luck with that. Our adapted bowling sent several students to the state tournament. So Evan Kugler finished fourth, Tucker Kugler sixteenth. And there were various divisions that you bowled in. Uh, Marcus Garcia was eleventh, and James Mertz and Marcus Garcia as a tandem finished eighth. And Jacob Burkstrand also participated in the state tournament. And hopefully, I did not miss any of those students, but congratulations to them. And then also congratulations to Nee Nee Moshi Weaver for the Scholar of Distinction Award in Cultural Studies from the Minnesota Department of Education. Um, you can see her artwork in the, um, displayed behind her photo. And congratulations on this prestigious award that had not only her artwork, but a personal research paper that she contributed as well. The Otter Girls, for the first time in the program's history, won the True Team Sectional Track Meet. Uh, so that qualified them or qualifies them to go down and compete at True Team State Championship. So congratulations to them. That's coming up on May seventeenth in Eden Prairie. Uh, for the community's benefit, I want to talk a little bit about the Prairie Restoration Project that will be taking place out at Lincoln School. Uh, that's making use of the remainder of the eight acres that the district purchased along with the target facility and grounds uh back in 2019. Currently, uh, that land is leased out for farming each year. Uh, this year it will be planted in soybeans because soybean stubble ends up being a very good substrate to do a Prairie Restoration over. So, uh, the map that's shown here is a little bit out of date, uh, but essentially, uh, it's that northeast corner of the property. There are a couple of potential designs that were developed by Widseth Engineering with a trail system. You can see one design there. Uh, there's another variation of it here. Uh, they also propose various signage and maps, et cetera, for the site once it's fully developed. That includes various combinations of potential seating. That includes various combinations of potential seating areas for the classroom instruction or teaching spaces. And so, at the present time, this is a really kind of a cool depiction of Prairie plants and how deep their root systems go. Pretty remarkable flora, since they're living in a fairly dry environment. That's how they latch on and continue to thrive. But I want to thank Otterizers Kiwanis, the Wildlife Forever, United Prairie Foundation, Fergus Falls Fish and Game Club, and Widset Engineering for their generous support of this project. The actual Prairie Restoration itself, all funding is in place to do that. The funding that will remain will be the development of the trail system, which will likely start out as a grass trail, mowed trail, and then it can be developed further later on. Signage, seating, those kinds of things. So the project is proceeding really probably better than I even thought that it might at this point, in terms of getting the funds in place for it. The only downside is that from planting to maturation, it's about a three-year process, so if you're impatient, you're gonna have to pull back the reins a little bit, because it'll take a while. My update on the state legislative process is really somewhat of a non-update. You have the governor's budget, you have the House budget, you have a Senate budget. House and Senate need to get together and reconcile policy differences and budget differences, and ultimately, the governor has to sign off and approve that budget bill before all the work is done. Technically, the session is supposed to finish up on May 19th. That does seem rather far-fetched at this point, but maybe the stars will align and they can get their work done. What appears to be more likely is that they will go into special session for either a short or long period of time. They do need statutorily to finish that budget by the end of June, otherwise, it triggers a state shutdown, where only essential services are carried out at that point. So a lot of work to be done still in the two sides coming together on policies and budget. Obviously, there's a great deal in play for the district financially with revenues and expenditures, but the whole piece has not been unveiled to date, so we will just continue to wait until we find out what will be passed ultimately. Upcoming events, we have the Blondo Art Show coming up on May 19th. This is always a great evening showing, lots of genres of student artwork, so I encourage the public to come out for that. We have a number of concerts, including one this evening, seventh and eighth grade choir, so please stop in and check out our students and their music performances. Then we have a Native American banquet coming up on May 28th. On May 29th, ALC graduation, that will be in the auditorium at Kennedy Secondary School. And then on May 30th, we have our large high school graduation ceremony in the Gold Gym. Some general information, today, this is hot off the presses, we received confirmation from MDE that our Adsys application was approved, so a special appreciation to Amelia Lamar for all her work on that, also to Renee on the budget side of things, and to the administration for their work in developing a plan that also includes a component over the next two years with behavioral support interventionist, which should be really helpful, not only for our classroom teachers, but also for our special ed staff. We were also notified today that we will be receiving another ShopSaver unit through the Sentry Program Grant, so that will replace an antiquated machine, and very happy to receive that support. And then, my last of this school year, Community Connections is scheduled for Thursday, May 22nd at 5:00 PM. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
My question is about the Prairie restoration and the trail system. That's accessible to all?
Will be accessible to all. There are, if it's a mowed grass trail, there are some equipment you can buy to make the terrain accessible to all students.
Not a question, maybe just to, just to add on to the PAY program, the philanthropy and youth. I know you mentioned we had three students who have got $20,000 scholarships this year. Also, if they, if our students are choosing to go to UND or NSU, that's being matched, so we got one of those three is actually gonna get $40,000 in scholarships because of that program.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the general consent items, and for consideration of approval here are the minutes from our April 28, 2025 Board meeting, and next, the building treasury report. Welcome to our president.
All right, so Treasurers' Report. We are sitting at, right now, our end balance for the general fund is at, without the construction fund, not the general fund, sorry. We're sitting at our budget without the construction fund at $21 million. And I did want to mention, Renee did make these notes for me, that we do only have about eight, eight, oh god, what is this? Hold on. Sorry, my brain just completely blanked on me. Eight million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, and a hundred, 165, is, that's all that's left of the unassigned money in that budget. But we are sitting, we are sitting okay on our budget so far, not budget, sorry, the Treasurers' Report. When it comes to the bills for this, this round of bills, we do have one mil, a little over $1 million that were paid out, the, a lot of that. We do have a big chunk of American Indian funds that were coming out, but they do have their own bucket of money that they use for that. You've also, we also saw a lot of baseball, golf, softball, fees coming out for officials and different activities. We also saw a large amount of money for the MCA testing throughout the state coming through. A lot more activity funds were paid out. Again, that comes separate from the general fund. There isn't activities funds for that. There were some tech upgrades that were done. There were, it looks like just about 50 mini desktops that were purchased. It was about $18,000. Some microscope kits for the middle school were also purchased. We did see the, it looks like about the last of the snow removal, that was, that was paid out, $1,500 there. A lift gate for a, for the snow removal truck that we have too, that was about $5,700. Some clothing for golf was purchased, but that will be reimbursed by the, reimbursed by the boosters. A new light board was purchased for the Kennedy Auditorium. We were told that was for, to allow for all the channels to be accessed. That goes above my pay grade, I'm not sure what that means, but that was done. Also, $34,000 for cybersecurity. That bill did go out, however, E-rate will reimburse us $22,000 for that, so that was a pretty nice chunk that will come back. Renee also discussed how we will have about $500,000 left in the construction fund, once everything is said and done with Lincoln. There are four buckets of money that go into that construction fund. That would be LTFM, Health and Safety LTFM, operating capital and tax abatement, and we're hoping that other improvements and other bills that are coming from the repairs of our schools can be put into those. She's gonna make sure that she vets that out, but hopefully, we can use that construction fund for those. And with that being said too, there was the $4,400 and $1,800 in repairs for Adams and McKinley that came out, and we will probably see more of that coming with different repairs that need to be done at those buildings to make them safe and usable for our staff and our students. And that's it for Bills and Treasurers' Report.
All right. And we have several personnel items. The district has hired three special education teachers, Sharon Roycher, Brady Hoskinson, and Jermaine Russell. Two elementary teachers are offered contracts and hired, Billy Duff, Ashton Hoot. Certified staff resignation includes Julia Berlining, who's a social studies teacher at ALC, and she's ending at the end of the school year, and Sarah Delaney, art teacher at Kennedy, is also in the school year. One support staff resignation, Stephanie Lundey, she's student supporter at Cleveland, and she's gonna be done, oh, she'll be done with her mom. Support staff recruitment, Rebecca Cole, early childhood education preschool classroom assistant. She is ending her service to the district. Daniel Hanson, still doing the faculty assistant, still ending up in the month. We have one coach hired, Paul Wicks, who's hired through, he had those soccer coach upon our approval. And so with that, there's someone who will make a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
And is there a second? Second, thank you. Any discussion on minutes, votes, or to report this now on your list? All in favor of approving the general consent item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved, and we will move on to new business. I'm entertaining a motion to approve the social studies curriculum for the 25, 26 school year, and it's gonna be done back, actually, like, the curriculum that Ms. Lamont presented, the curriculum. All right, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. And that's our new business is, can retain a motion for the Spring 25, 26 Memorial and Public Agreement that outlines the fee structure for all of the high school program that, that is done through the University of Minnesota. You have that in the packet, will someone make that motion?
I'll motion.
All right, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Karen Young, all favor of approving that agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. The next item for the board approval is, if we can retain a motion in regards to the program, which we discussed in a couple of our earlier sessions, and then we just see if someone wants to make a motion in regards to allowing flow data for certified staff to control contract or obligation.
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this one? I, I would note, a procedural law for next year, to present, by the request of education council of staff, maybe that's, and then, and we said no, and then I came through the board, but I think in the future, I'd like the teacher union to also make a direct request for the board, because this kind of, this is totally like, after you've said no, and then we kind of, I'm curious, but we didn't have an actual official request to consider it.
I had a chair. Just one correction, the EA wrote a letter of request straight to the board. They just, they just sent it through to.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I didn't, I didn't see anything, and I thought that perhaps the process had not come through, but we will be, all right, so we will, we have the board's table to approve it for this year. Have we forced the DA, any other discussion?
Does the, do the principal building principals oversee that?
Um, yeah, I would say, you know, I think you mentioned that before, but.
Yeah, yeah, like, they can be the ones that would police that over us, right?
If I were the, I would send out a copy of the form, if the staff complete, and then we're gonna show the technical side of it.
I think that, you know, this is primarily because of the snow days, and I think we've already got our schedule set for next year, but when, and then meet and confer, I think, especially the year after, when we start, when Labor Day is as late as it is, there's gonna be a lot of pressure to, to pack our whole schedule in, whether we start a little before Labor Day, or whether we try and schedule snow days ahead of time, or not during the year, you know what I'm saying?
But frankly, I'm wondering if we should scrap next year's calendar, because we'll talk the work session about changing the dates of graduation.
Right, right.
So, and, apparently, apparently, I always bring him to his strong feelings about this. So, so that'll be, I'll bring up that at our work session. Are we too far into next year's calendar to reconsider, because we outlined two snow days for next year, and it's golden June, so.
And the, and the following year is gonna be even worse.
Yep.
Because of the light sticks.
We need to resolve this, because we're just gonna spend all this all the time. All right. Any other comments?
I think what you said was right. We're approving this for this year only. It's not a precedent, we're trying not to set a precedent, that this is what we're gonna do from now on, this is for this year only, for this day only.
Yeah. Right, and it does set, as written, and endorsed here, that's set a completion. Okay. All right. Karen Young, for the discussion on the favor of the previous, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next item of business is a teacher of the Death Part of Hearing Agreement for Defense of a Position between Fergus Falls School District and the Riverdale Education District, that was beginning in August, and on November 2nd next year. Will someone make a motion to approve that?
I'll motion.
All right, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we have a motion to approve, and this is a beautiful number, .6875, full time included, like, the stolen condition, at Roseville, beginning on December 7th. Would someone make a motion to approve that much of a position? I'll make that one. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. Next is, because is a motion to purchase, or to, is an agreement between the children and youth in foster care placement, well, no, I'll sort of, regret. Ahead of us is a motion to approve a purchase and service agreement for transportation for children that are in need of foster care, and that would be an agreement that signed federally, the county, to have a responsibility of placement, but a shared agreement for transport. So, would someone offer a motion to that? All right, is there?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item number seven is a resolution to accept public donations for the continuing to fifth grade band for the 25, 26 year school, 25, 26 school year, sufficient designated funds to cover costs of the condition must be used by the district, nor by the Department of Department of Friday the 30th, before the fund or institution can continue the fifth grade band position when the number of, be appropriated to eliminate benefit in the band program, and no refund to a deep issue. Does someone wanna offer that resolution and look for the one?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
And, someone want a second one?
I'll second it.
All right. Any other discussion, and we'll be standing this out a couple of times, any other discussion on the board table about?
Does the actual amount of underregulation need in the resolution?
It's in the neighborhood of $50,000. You could put $50,000 in the resolution to that question.
Do you wanna amend the resolution?
Uh, yep, we'll.
Yep, we'll amend it to include the, to cover the cost of fifty thousand dollars. In line, the second sentence there.
Okay, do you need that?
Sufficient designated funds to cover the fifty thousand dollar cost of the position must be received by the district no later than four p.m. on Friday, the thirtieth. Just on that second one.
All right, do you amend your second?
I amend it.
All right. Any other questions, discussions?
I just have one thing, I was wondering if this May thirtieth is too short of a timeline, or is it because of budget-wise? I'm just wondering, are two weeks sufficient enough to raise fifty thousand dollars, do you think?
So, the rationale behind it is that if the position is the reductions we submitted, administratively, there's not an inconsiderable amount of work on the schedule that will have to be redone, and so, we just need an earlier, earlier end date, so that we know what, what a thing we need to do with the scheduling. It affects facility use potentially, as well as personnel assignments.
And a lot of those objections have already been made, so we've, Daniel himself, made thirty of those. Just complicated in my understanding, that is, so. Is anyone feeling interested in discussing this rationale on both, do you put discussion on it, otherwise, we don't, if that would be?
I've, I've heard from some parents and any of some staff, that's, it's, I mean, school districts run on, on policy and procedures, and I think it's, it's a bad policy to fund staff through donations. I think it sets a horrible precedent, and, and that's, that's where I'm at.
I, I am going to vote no on the resolution. Maybe I had a board vote, and, and one of the very common fundamentals of a functioning board is to accept the vote, even if you don't like it, and move forward with the use of, to, to that, to be supported. So, in that regard, I, I don't want to see a precedent where, where we begin the process of re-derivative work. Anyone?
I guess the, the comment I wanted to make about this is that this is just a consequence of not getting our building bond passed. And it's the first of, I think, what are going to be many consequences of not getting that building bond passed. As you hear from multiple people, as we're hearing reports of how, you know, we're needing more and more repairs for Adams and McKinley, those, I don't see them lasting another decade, I don't know, you know, and had we had a new building, we would have had a, a great rehearsal space for the large group, for our younger musicians. And I think those that voted no, or told people to vote no, didn't realize some of the things that have, that, that would happen. And, you know, I still feel that, that location was the best, it was vetted, more than any other decision I've ever been a part of, and the community said no, but now, the community has to live with that, with, you know, reduction of some programs, even if we do a Band-Aid and this does pass, I'm still going to vote yes, just because of, you know, my love for, for music and arts, but it's a Band-Aid for a year, and it's, it's not going to solve the inefficiencies with transportation, so, that's about all I had to say about it.
No more calls for comments? Anything else? I'm going to report for most, any more of those, all right?
It's a resolution.
Kirby Anderson?
No.
Kelly Brown?
Yes.
Jenny Christensen?
No.
Missy Hermes, no?
No.
Stephen Biggison?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. We move on to our next resolution, which is the resolution on the retirement of Rebecca Cole, where she began employment for the first fall public schools in August 2019, whereas Rebecca has been a valued employee of the first fall public schools in the past six years, and whereas Rebecca has been a dedicated ECF, E3 school system for the district, and now therefore, be resolved by first fall school board to thank Rebecca for the six years of service for the first fall public schools. Are you all for that resolution and move for adoption?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on the resolution? Or? Kristen? Yes. Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Kelly Brown?
Yeah.
Jenny Christensen?
Yes.
Hermes, yes? No? Yes, the resolution is adopted. Our last few other business, new business item, is the resolution on the retirement of Daniel Manson, where as Daniel Manson began his employment at the first fall public schools in December 1997, and whereas Daniel has been a valued employee of the first fall public schools in the past twenty-eight years, and whereas Daniel has been a dedicated assistant to the council supervisor of the district, and now therefore, be it resolved by first fall school board to thank Daniel for his twenty-eight years of service to the first fall public schools. Would someone offer that resolution and move for adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion on the resolution? Starting with Christiane? Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Kelly Brown?
No.
Jenny Christensen?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes? Melanie Cole?
No.
Stephen Biggison?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, we will have a work session tonight, having both the reach program, regulation date for next year, on the Friday night, and it's quite early that our next meeting will be on Tuesday morning, which is Monday's Monday, and we start our summer meeting, but we're doing it at seven fifteen, maybe. It says other meeting room, or we can go back there?
We will.
Okay, because attendance gets, so, we need to answer. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sum up.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournments, all right?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned, so, hard discussion.